I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's planning board meeting. Please be aware of the fire exit. It is to the left of the room. In the event of emergency, please move in a calm and orderly fashion, and please take the stairs and do not use the elevator. The meetings are recorded by the secretary for the purpose of a record and minutes, so each time you come to the podium, please speak into the microphone and identify yourself. The board will follow the items in the order that they appear on the agenda. There is an extra copy near the door if you need one. After the case has been called, the applicant and/or their representative shall come to the podium, identify him or herself, give their address, and then present their case. The planning board members will then have an opportunity to question the applicant. If this case is a public hearing, it will be open for public input, at which time anyone wishing to speak to the board, and once again, only to the board, will come to the podium, identify themselves along with their address, and direct any questions to the board. Once all input has been completed, the applicant or site representative will then be given a chance or opportunity to respond to the public input. Once all public input has been completed and all questions have been satisfied, the case will be closed to the public input, and then the board will move on to a decision. No further input is allowed after that time. With that, please call the first case.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First case on the agenda is case number PB 1908-1. Upon the matter of request by Roman Corbin for a final site plan approval and steep slope environmental protection overlay district permit to construct a single-family dwelling with dock on premises 667 Seneca Road, tax ID 077.12-1-17.1 in an R1 residential district.
Hi, my name is Roman Corbin. I thank you for the few minutes here. We're looking to construct a single-family dwelling at 667 Seneca Road. I believe there has been some questions back and forth via email. One of the questions has been about revegetation, once the project is complete, and we have made copies. If I can pass them around. I believe most of the questions have been answered up to this point. I mean, we have obtained a DEC permit to proceed with this project, so at this point, we're seeking approvals from the town to continue on with the project and be able to build this single-family on 667 Seneca Road. I'm not sure what additional questions at this point are, but I think you guys should have all the information. There's quite a few trees have been killed for this project.
My copy's a little rough. Could you go down on the right-hand side exactly what that says?
On the right-hand side, it starts from the top. It says, "Vinka Minor to be placed on the slope," which is the slope is on the northern side of the property there. And then at the rain garden, on the northern side of the rain garden, we're going to plant mint. The rain garden was going to be filled with large rocks and different grasses for the moisture, and on the bottom side of the rain garden was going to be with the river birch trees to help support the hill. And then below that, there's a large slope that we're going to plant a vinka minor to help retain the slope, and then the bottom towards the... By the water, there was going to be river birch trees to be planted to help support with erosion.
Thank you. Anything else you want to say about the application?
I mean, to be honest with you, I'm not sure what the questions are at this point, because I think we've been going back and forth quite a bit via email, answering questions. I think we presented quite a few different paperwork along with this for the plan of the house, and I mean, the proposed plan of the single-family house is basically to be built and based on the prior approvals.
So I think, I just want to clarify, in your response to the conservation group, what you brought in today answers question number 23, is that correct, where you said we'll be able to provide an answer to this prior to or at the meeting Monday?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. That's the one that you're answering?
Yeah.
Otherwise, you answered all the other questions. Did you also get this today?
We did get this, I mean-
Town engineer?
Couple hours ago.
Couple hours ago. Okay. So have you had a chance to review it?
We had a chance to read through it, and a lot of the questions that have been asked on that, I think they have been answered prior to this.
Well, so the board's going to want to know, only because if the town engineer's asking these questions at this point in time, he didn't see the answers.
Okay.
So for one reason or another, and help me clarify that, Michelle, he did get all the submissions of everything submitted, correct? The town engineer? He's saying that he thinks he answered all these questions, and I'm saying if the town engineer sent this today, he wouldn't be asking the question if he saw the answers to these. Am I misunderstanding, or?
No, not necessarily. If you look at the top of the engineer's report, he cites the four documents that he had access to, and there have been additional documents since that time. Most notably, I would think, would be the response to the conservation board's request.
So how do I know?
But I'm not sure that, just to interrupt here, that that answers all of the questions that we got from Shafran, right? Are you telling me it does, Patrick?
I think the applicant's saying it does. That's why I'm double-checking.
Correct.
Which one's yes?
The applicant is saying that it does.
Okay.
That's not what we've said.
So on here, I can find the 100-year floodplain somewhere? That's been answered? That's the first question I'm just asking.
For example, on one of the utilities questions, we have a Vanguard drawings-
Can you, what's easier for the board is if you refer to the drawing that you're, as it's numbered, labeled, and then we can look at it with you.
Well, this will be on the first page of La Bella Questions, where it says utility services, and this, I think, kind of-
I'm looking at site plan is the first one I'm looking at.
Oh, and the site plan, so this was stapled to-
Because I think we're most interested in the site, not utilities.
I think what he's saying is, under the first comments on the La Bella letter are titled site plan. You were citing utility.
So just below that, there's utilities. We're asking for utility services. That's just the page that I was on.
What Ellen's asking is, could you start with the site plan?
Oh, the site plan, okay.
And then refer to where the answers are on the documents.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I don't understand Ellen.
Interpreting for the hearing able.
That was a compliment. So what the town's looking for is, you're saying with pretty much confidence that you feel these questions have been answered, and that's what, you know, we're looking for.
That's all I want.
So the 100-year floodplain, I mean, I don't actually have this with me. I think that's the map that we need to get. As far as the federal wetlands and classifications, we reached out to the department that handles the wetlands, and they stated to us that there is no wetlands on the property. So we've reached out to a lot of different departments. Let me see if we have an email back from them. There was a lot of departments that were involved in this, so.
So the state and the feds have declared no wetlands on this property?
Correct.
And you've get, you have that writing, in writing to answer the town engineer, then?
I have spoken to a lot of them via phone. I did ask them to send it to us via email, so we just want to make sure we have a copy of the email.
That would be helpful, I think, to everybody.
If I may, for just a moment, so some of the technical issues that the engineer is asking to see further documentation on here are things that you can condition with your approval here today. So you can condition that the engineer needs to review this and see sufficient documentation from the applicant-
Sure.
-prior to the building permits being issued.
Yep, I get it.
Now, as to whether or not some of the documents that the engineer hasn't seen yet answer all of the questions that the engineer has, I don't think anyone here can really speak to that, since no one here is the engineer that was asking those questions. So for instance, I believe the applicant is referring to his DEC permit when he speaks about addressing the wetland concerns, because that is covered in the DEC permit that they received.
But I think the town would want that in writing also, right?
Understood, but that could all be encompassed and would most appropriately be encompassed in conditioning that the engineer review the plans for these technical issues that they've already raised.
Yep, that part, I definitely understand that we can condition lots of things on the application.
Okay.
Okay.
I do have copies of the emails here. I can pass them around. I have copies for everybody, but you guys are welcome to take a look at this email.
Actually, I think the question was, show the location of the federal wetland.
There is none. There's no wetlands on the property.
He's saying that the feds and the state actually have told him that there are no wetlands, but he doesn't have that in writing yet?
Well, no, there is an email confirming that.
It's an email, writing? Okay.
Yeah, I do have a copy of the email they sent us.
On the, in the same vein, the conservation comments ask to show where the e-pot is on the, on the map. Is, I, it seems like there's a, there's a steep slope e-pot on here, but what part of the property contain, like, a lot of times when we get this, they'll be in an area where they kind of draw out where that e-pot exists, because usually, sometimes it, most of the time, it doesn't encompass the entire lot, and so it's good to know exactly where that e-pot is, so that if you're building in the slot, but you're not even touching that e-pot, then.
Well, the e-pot is basically where the garage and the house meet. That is the steep slope that they're referring to.
Right, but it's not marked on the map, right?
Yeah, I think that that's the e-pot map, isn't it?
It is the e-pot map.
I think the e-pot map was submitted.
Where is it?
This one. That one right there, the very colorful one? And just to clarify, I'm looking at the emails. Mr. Corbin has handed over to me. The DEC did in fact issue a wetland permit, so he is able to do work in the wetland and the 100-foot, well, in the 100-foot buffer. They gave you a buffer permit, and the Army Corps of Engineers reviewed multiple online resources and sees no indication that there may be wetlands or waters outside of Orana Quay Bay and encroach upon 667 Seneca Road. So for clarification, the Army Corps of Engineers does not have a buffer on their, on their program, wetland program. The state does. He has permission to operate and construct a dwelling in a 100-foot buffer.
Why don't you just go down the list, just to make sure you got it here?
So the next step is the home construction, utility installation, grading. I believe that is shown on the large map. The folded map with the overlay. That should answer that question?
Well, I'm just, he's just referencing that there are sheets three, four, and seven were provided, so do you have three, four, and seven there?
So I guess I'm a little confused about the sheet three, four, and seven, because the whole, oh, three, four, seven, okay. I believe the whole Vanguard.
You have the whole thing, is what you're saying?
Supplied.
So you do have a sheet three, four, and seven?
Just to go back to what was mentioned earlier, a lot of these are just markings on a map, right? Are just, he doesn't have it denoted on our, on his plans, so we can condition an approval.
Mike, I understand that.
The only reason I'm asking is, do we need to go through every step and look at, he doesn't have a line drawn on a map?
I would support asking the fellow board members if there are any specific questions or concerns that we want to specifically discuss. I'm okay with certain things like wetland, because if we condition that, and he just provides the proof that makes our town engineer happy, then that's sufficient for me. If there are other specific points that we want to talk about, like erosion control or something specific, that's fine. I don't, I agree with Mike. I don't know that we need to talk about every-
I guess it's, how confident are you that you've answered all of these questions, is what I'm looking for?
I mean, I'm 90% confident that we answer these questions well. I mean, this is our first step, and I think the next step would be is to get, you know, a qualified builder that we will be able to hire. We're not going to be doing this ourselves.
I know you only had this for a couple hours. There's nothing that came up here that has you concerned?
Nothing that jumped out at me that was concerning with the questions. I mean, I know we have answers to all this here and there at some point. There's just a lot of paperwork here.
So if that's the case, then I'll refer to the board if there's specific questions they want answered.
I think that I would be comfortable going that way. I think we're going to need to condition that the questions get answered, though.
Agreed, agreed. I think everybody's on that point.
And, Mr. Chairman, I would like to, I guess, hold my questions until we open the public hearing, and here with the conservation board has to say in response to these comments, because they are the ones that have a little more solid understanding, since they wrote the comments.
You're talking about this, the conservation board question?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
And then the applicant's response to that.
I have no problem with that.
I do have one question, and I don't know who can answer this. Does FEMA have a guideline on a wall? I know that they have recommendations now on the lake at 254 feet above sea level for the new break walls with the flooding. Is there a recommendation on the bay?
Can I make a comment on that?
Yep.
So as far as the-
But who knows it, because I don't know it.
I'm not directly answering your question. I'm kind of going around your question, but as far as the break wall, we decided to actually go ahead and build the property, because the property will not get flooded at this point where it is, and we were going to revisit, and that's one of the things I was discussing back and forth with DEC. The proposed break wall is not necessarily needed in that area. We're not exposed to very large waves. It's more a cul, like a cul-de-sac, I guess, on the, on the lake, but we're going to pursue more of a natural break wall, and we're going to supply, we're going to discuss that with DEC and supply new plans with DEC, a natural break wall, more or less on concrete or wood established break wall on there. I just think it's an overkill for the area.
Yeah, I don't agree or disagree with you on it. I don't know, have enough knowledge. I just know that 254 is now what FEMA is recommending on the lake.
Okay, yeah, and at this point, we're not going to do anything with the break wall. We're just looking more or less for the, for the-
Then I would have one question for staff. At the low-living level of Seneca that goes toward the yacht club, was that ever flooded in this year or two years ago?
I don't know that I can speak to that specific site, but in regards to your break wall question, I can tell you that he would need to get both a DEC permit as well as a floodplain permit from the town, so he would have to meet any of the current regulations that fall under that. I can't tell you whether or not a specific site has flooded.
Because I know that the-
It would depend property to property, to some extent.
Yeah, all right.
From my experience, because I have visited this property quite a few times this year, it has not flooded.
Okay, I mean, I know other parts have flooded along the bay, just because I've been down there and witnessed them, the same as everybody else in the town, so, okay.
I have a question about number 21 from the conservation board. It asks, what percentage of the non-native invasive trees larger than six inches are going to be preserved? And your response was two. Is that right?
So with this, with this lot, so we're only speaking about RB1?
Yeah.
RB2 has a lot more trees, like white oaks and larger trees that we will preserve to support the hill. The, this hill is really, I mean, the only portion of the hill is on RB1 is the front, which will be the southern part of the lot towards the lake. There's not too many good trees to preserve. A lot of them are either falling down or soft trees, and some of them are part of the, where the house would actually sit. So our goal was to basically clear out the lot and revegetate with new trees and things like that. This property, just over the years, has been overgrown, and the trees have just fallen down. I mean, it's going to take a little bit to clear up this lot.
Okay, I'd be interested to see what conservation says, whenever, when you come up.
Like I said, the RB2, the lot next, it does have a lot of good trees to preserve, unfortunately, on this lot, it just-
My concern is that the, you know, with the steep slope, whether it's a good tree or not, the root system is what's holding together the slope, but I'm interested to see what you guys say.
And on the slope itself, it's, just from being visually there, there's really no trees there, really holding this slope up.
Any other questions? There's not? Anything else you want to tell the board at this time?
No, I mean, I-
Unless there's questions.
At this point, if you don't mind having a seat, we'll listen to the public input, and then we'll come back if there's questions.
Okay.
Okay, so please hold the answers until you come back up. With that, I'd like to open up the public hearing. All those who'd like to speak about this matter, please come to the podium. Well, nobody wants to speak, no, okay.
Hi, I am Krista Greer. I'm with the conservation board, and we had originally given you some comments via email and marginal modifications to some comments from the 2010 review. So we just got these, and of course, our whole board has not had a chance to review everything, so he was kind of getting my opinion on some of this stuff. Some of the things that we were still a little concerned, our major concerns were about the drainage and the steep slope coming down the hill. So the way that the driveway is oriented is going to send runoff from Seneca Road down the driveway to the house, so we were kind of hoping that there was going to be some sort of additional grading or additional trough or something to actually direct some of that road runoff safely into the rain garden, and we were looking more for details about how large that rain garden is and can it sustain some sort, what quantity of water it can sustain, and then how it can then overflow and then come back down that slope, because that's the section where it's going to be, it's going to be the steepest along that right edge of the property, right below the rain garden. That was one of our major concerns, and then our other major concern was about the trees that are on-site. So apparently, there was a tree inventory done in 2010, but I don't think anybody ever saw it recently, correct? Yeah, so we didn't have it, but I mean, according to this one, there's still a lot of trees on here, and I have not been to the site, so I'm not entirely sure, but we would like to see trees protected and maintained on the site. While we encourage planting new trees, but maintaining, the new trees are not going to have the stability that some of the older trees will have. So if there's a way to minimize the grading in some areas, or at least protect and keep some of these as much as possible, that would benefit. And then our other major concern was detailed erosion and sediment controls. Just how is this going to be phased out during the process? Like, when you're excavating this building, where is this material going? How are you protecting that area? Now that the dock and the wall are kind of off the list, can we, we don't really need to see anything like the turbidity curtain or anything like that, but just the phasing of how this is going to be constructed and kept stable while this whole area is basically denuded for, it said it was going to be almost like a year to construct, correct? A while, it'll be a while.
Please direct it this way.
Yeah, sorry, this way, so.
So I'm just, so I looked at some of the responses. Do you feel that these weren't detailed enough?
They, yeah, we're kind of still concerned about some of them, because a lot of it was still, like, that once the contractor got on board, they'd be able to detail some of this out. And I know this is a little bit different than from a homeowner, single property versus a development application, where we would have the full set of detailed plans, so that might be something that they're going to work out with the contractor when that gets there. But it's still just a little bit concerning to how that steep slope section's going to be protected in the way that this is shown with the drainage, that it's not going to have a problem on that steep slope during construction, and then eventually in the future.
In your comments, you call for native grasses, et cetera. I see on the plans that they have vinka minor denoted as probably what they're trying to meet with that, and I-
I think it's invasive.
That's what I thought, so I wanted to ask.
I mean, I think it's a commonly used invasive, but I still think it's invasive.
Doesn't exactly fit underneath the umbrella of native grasses.
It's not native, correct? Right, but-
So what would be the recommendations?
So there are different steep slope grasses that are available, that can be used, that are more native plants. You can get some ivies and things like that would help out. Anything with a denser root system and a ground cover, but also getting some tree, like the river birches are great. Those will help out a lot, but the denser grasses, I think, would be faster to come in, and then you can backfill in with some ivies or pecasandras and things like that. There's a lot of options that could work in that area, but an immediate, from an erosion sediment control plan, you would have at least a fast-growing dense grass that'll pop up first, and then your actual planted stuff will pop up later.
So to summarize those again, you said it was, you want to make sure the trees were protected?
The trees are protected and, and revegetated with steep slope appropriate and native grasses and trees. Minimize the removal of trees to the extent possible.
And you said something about the runoff?
And the drainage that comes down, comes down the driveway, being adequately directed to the, to the rain garden, and then safely conveyed out of the rain garden and down the slope.
And you said there was some, you didn't have any clarity on how much water could actually hold the rain garden?
Right, because it's just a, there's a circle on the plane- Right, because it's just a, there's a circle on the plan and then the he's given approximate dimensions from there in the comments back, but usually there's a sizing, you know, like we're expecting a hundred cubic feet of water to come this way and I have two hundred cubic feet to store it or something like that. There should be some sort of volumetric account for that.
Did I hear you say something about if the rain garden were to overflow, how that water would
Correct.
Without
Typically, a rain garden would be designed for like a one-inch storm event, like a very simple tiny little storm event. And that would be how much water could sit in a rain garden. And then it would filter through the ground and then anything else is going to overflow. So if this rain garden is designed for a one-inch rainfall and we have three or four inches of rain that comes down, this is going to go crazy overflowing down the hill slope. So that's where the volume is a kind of an important thing and how is this going to overflow and be stable down that back slope?
You said safely conveyed?
Safely conveyed is our usual term.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I heard them all.
If I can interject very quickly. Brad, I don't know if you remember, long ago and far away, we had a project on Denzmore Road that had a retention pond.
Oh, yes.
And it had an overflow that went down the hill, so we didn't
Yes.
Slough everything off.
But it actually had a drain system that
When it got to a certain point, it would trigger the drain.
That also had the overflow too, remember?
Right.
Yeah. Just on a, you asked a bunch of questions about having the stumps removed. How does leaving the stump or removing the stump, does that impact the steep slope at all? Is there a preference?
So a stump in and of itself, if it's got a dense root system in there, can hold the slope. So if it's on the slope, we'd probably just leave the stump in place. Other areas can be scrubbed out with no big deal, but it's just kind of nice to see what's being left and what's being kept in place. So you know, you can really identify what the disturbance level is if the stumps are left or not or scrubbed out.
As far as phasing goes, they're not going onto RB two, which is probably the part that we were seeing, I was seeing when I was over there. And that's where the north slope seems to be eroding the most. Should he be doing that phase work before he does any demolition to minimize the impact on that?
I mean, there's not much you can have him do, I think, if he's not working on RB two. I mean, I would be more concerned just like from the stabilizing of a, of a, of this site. I mean, it's obviously going to have impacts on the next site over and vice versa.
If it collapses, it's going to keep on moving south.
Correct. But the, how they're going to excavate in this area and keep that stable would be a big part of
Right.
the E N S measures and where they're going to put that material. And like the town had brought up the cut fill balance, that would be another one that's nice to know. Is this going to be stable across the whole site or you're going to have to truck stuff off and import stuff in?
Anything else you'd like the board to?
Uh, no, I think that's most of our comments.
Any other questions?
Just want to thank conservation for the time that they put into it. Helpful.
Yeah, thank you. Your advice is great.
Is there anybody else who'd like to address the board regarding this application? Would you like to come up and respond to any of the questions? I usually close it when he's According to the rules. The burning rules. All questions have been satisfied. The case will be closed to the public input after the applicant responds.
Go ahead. So as far as the drainage, as far as the water runoff, the RB one has actually been preserved pretty well due to the berm that's been built along the edge of the road. So it seems like a lot of the water is directed down, down the street. That RB one is not being affected by the runoff from the, from the road. RB two, we are having more of a drainage issues because the berm kind of stops right into RB two and that's where a lot of the water does run into. That seems to be more, you know.
I, I think that's the concern on the driveway. The first, first point you brought up is that that berm, you're gonna, you're gonna cut into it to put a driveway in.
We're actually not going to cut into that berm because that berm actually extends into the neighbor's driveway, which will be to the right of us as you're looking at this property. And that berm does preserve the water runoff as it does rain. So that's, that's one important thing to leave in place and build the driveway up from there past that berm. Just make sure we do not have the, a huge amount of water come into our driveway and into the garage and into the into the property. As far as the rain garden, the other thing we have been kind of discussing back and forth is build a secondary rain garden on the bottom of the hill and have the overflow from the top of the rain garden come into the bottom rain garden that way drain out that way. If, if it is excessive rain.
Is that an RB two?
No, that would still be an RB one.
Okay, and this drawing though, it's showing me.
The original proposal was for two rain gardens, one RB one, one RB two. But if you take right next to the, the house, I mean, it's not showing on that drawing, but as a backup plan, we can build a secondary rain garden right on the bottom of the hill to, for the top rain garden to overflow and to basically transfer the water down the bottom of the hill so it doesn't grow the hill.
But isn't the concern there how the water gets down the steep slope? So if there's another rain garden at the base, that's good. But the, I believe that the concern is the erosion that the water would cause getting from the first rain garden to the second rain garden on the slope.
Which can be done via pipes, over full pipes, things like that. I think, I think it should be a very simple way of fixing that issue. I mean, we'd have to get away and have erosion problems and having the house move down the
Yeah, I think when Mr. Evelyn referred, that's pretty close to the way that they had done it at another side. There was and when it got to a certain level, it would get into the pipe and go down to the other.
PVC pipe or whatnot have it ground down, which that can be done fairly simply, I think. And I, I mean, as far, as far as the trees, the tree inventory still shows the, the current, what's on the property now. Just as I mentioned before, these trees are just soft trees and, you know, we had a beaver that got a couple of them and chewed the bottom of the ground, things like that. And they're not safe trees to keep around. As far as on the hill, there's really not many trees on the hill. It's more of a overgrown grass and things like that that are there. And as far as the arborvit, he says it? I can't pronounce all these names. It's, it's all over the property. I mean, if it doesn't invasive species, I mean, we're happy to change it to, to whoever's native. I mean, we're not, we're not stuck on this. We're just hoping to, you know, we, we, there's been a project to us. I mean, I've done a lot of real estate and, you know, remodeling, things like that. We haven't gotten to the point as far as building something like this on the water. So it's been a lot of research for us and, I mean, if the conservation board has a suggestion, we're happy to, you know, to look into it and see how well that would fit with that and take that in consideration, potentially use that. I mean, plants are, to us, plants are plants as long as they look nice and, you know, they do their job. That's obviously some of these hills, you can't, they're not going to be, be able to maintain via lawnmower. So we're hoping for something that can just kind of maintain itself over time. And planting some shrubs and bushes later on, I think would help preserve it as well. For just, at this point, without having a contractor in place, we're not too sure what's gonna, you know, grow in faster than we're hoping for.
Any other questions for the applicant? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing. At this point, you can stay there just to see if there's any other questions before we deliberate. I see some conversations. Is there any questions for the applicant?
Trying to get an agenda.
With that, you can have a seat. So is that, is there someone, I just want to point out that this is a type two. Therefore, we don't need to vote, correct? So in regards to seeker, case number PB one nine zero eight dash one is a type two action. With that, I would entertain a motion. Going to be some conditions.
Discussion. If not, I'd make a motion.
If there's any other discussions, now's the time.
Alright, Mr. Chairman.
Asked that a couple of times. I didn't think there was anymore.
Take a stab at a, at a motion with some, some conditions here. With regards to application PB one nine zero eight dash one, I would like to make a motion that we approve the application with the following conditions. That the approval is for lot RB one only. That the fire marshal's comment in letter dated August twenty-first be addressed.
Did I hear satisfactory?
Yes, please. That the town engineer comments dated August twenty-sixth, two thousand and nineteen be satisfactorily addressed. That the conservation board comments dated August nineteenth be satisfactorily addressed.
Just a quick question. Who, who would, who would determine that? In other words, satisfactorily addressed in whose opinion?
Typically, when we've done this, we do it by town staff. Do we need to add that?
I would, and if you can specify this, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll add that to
Please, to all three of those comment letters.
Any others?
Yep. That the drainage specifically relating to the driveway, the rain garden or gardens, including overflow piping, be specifically reviewed and approved by the town engineer. That the comments in the Monroe County Department of Planning and Development letter dated August ninth, two thousand and nineteen.
I'm sorry, what was that?
August ninth, two thousand and nineteen. Be satisfactorily addressed to town staff. I have one last one, if your pencil's still writing, Mr. Chairman. That the plantings on the site be reviewed and approved by the conservation board.
Can we add removals? Plantings and removals. I'm concerned about the, that there's only two trees that are being left and I
And for stabilization and
Yeah.
Okay. Okay with that, if everybody else on the board is okay with that.
Give me the wording for that.
That the proposed plantings and removed plantings be reviewed and approved by the conservation board. This is just a process question. Are we able to put that sort of onus on the, on the conservation board as an advisory board? So should it say conservation board and/or town attorney? Or I'm sorry, not town attorney, town engineer. How about, how about in conjunction with town staff? In conjunction with town staff, that works for me.
I'm sorry, board, that was, that was proposed plantings and removed plantings be approved by the conservation board and in conjunction with the town staff?
I would say approved by town staff.
In conjunction with the conservation.
In conjunction with conservation board review.
Thank you.
I would accept that modification, Mr. Chairman.
Any other?
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Would somebody like me to read those again before they second, or is somebody ready to second?
I think I'll just second it.
And this is for final site plan and steep slope. I'd just like a clarification. With that, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It carries. Thank you. Good luck building this beautiful home.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Good luck.
Would you like to call the next case?
I believe I need a motion to remove the case from the table from the board, please.
So moved?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm sorry, who seconded that?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Tabled item, case number PB one nine zero seven dash one, upon the matter request by Christian Duer, acting as agent for twenty-seven seventy-one Culver Road LLC for revised site plan approval to convert the existing building into a nine-unit one-bedroom apartments and construct a six, excuse me, construct a new six-bay garage with related site improvements on premises twenty-six, twenty-seven sixty-three and twenty-seven seventy-one Culver Road in a mixed-use commercial district. My apologies.
Good evening. I'm Chris Duer. As indicated, I have some stuff to pass out. For the last meeting, regularly scheduled meeting, we were tabled to come back to this meeting to do some corrections and some requests. And we went to the workshop and most of you were there at the workshop and had to do some, some additional corrections. and had to do some some additional corrections. We've changed the lighting, you know, all the light exterior light fixtures over the garage and over the building are going to be this uh full cutoff LED fixture. Thank you. Four of five, the first sheet, I think, in your packet, you'll see the light contours from the LED fixtures. You know, for this adjusted new fixture. And this fixture is a 3500 Kelvin, so it's it's a warmer fixture. It's not but and that's the lowest I can get in that fixture.
I appreciate that.
No, I knew, and that's one of my pet peeves, too. It's like, let's make it look like an operating room, you know? Then it was requested that um on the architectural elevations, I um add the uh the Sherman Williams paint color. And that's a um, oh man, I wish I could read my writing. Saki? 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 Where are you looking? That's what originally was. Saki. Sorry, Saki is the color. 6619, which is what we're trying to do is match the existing brick, you know, that's on the building. And that's what that that color is. For the landscape plan, we were requested just to add a note to um show snow storage and we adjusted the trees back slightly. So you can see that in front of the the parking where the cars are facing um east. We also on the demo plan for the landscaping, we just showed the one tree being demoed, the neighbor. The adjacent neighbor wants the tree on her property removed as well. But you guys can't. It was decided you guys can't vote on it, so we pulled that off of the plans and I mean, and that can be worked out. And I believe that was really it as a result of the um the workshop. There may be some additional questions from members that may not have been at the workshop.
I do have one. On the old plan that I was looking at, it shows a mercury vapor lay on the old
No, that's gone. Everything's going to be that same fixture that I just showed you.
Great. And the rain garden, the range is going to sheet across the uh the blacktop and that's where it's supposed to hold.
It'll sheet into the rain guard, it'll reach an elevation and then sheet out of the rain garden. There's no
Not into the sheet. I would imagine that's probably going to be enough to hold it, right?
Yes, correct. Yep, yep.
That was my question and that's all I had for you. I appreciate you uh coming back so many times for us.
No, no worries. I mean, we in even order to sheet it, we stepped the garage. If you look at the elevation, you'll see how it steps up. You know, so we didn't interfere with the existing grade, you know, so it's sheeting the same way it was sheeting.
And on the north side of the new garage, are you eliminating those parking spots?
No, no. I don't know if that was ever
It's still going to be asphalted or?
Yes, correct, correct.
Okay.
So Chris, thank you for addressing all the things we talked about in the workshop. There's one thing we didn't talk about and our our lawyer tonight brought it up that there's actually, this is two properties, correct?
Correct.
And I guess in order to, what should be done, and I'll let you speak to this, is it should be resubbed to one since you're building right across the property line or?
Yes, it could be a administrative resub division, so we'll
So they give it a condition?
A condition.
Yes, that can be a condition of it, correct in your I mean, the only thing we could do is we could do a party well in the garage, but I you know, not having we always were going to uh resub and join them, but when we changed the zoning, it didn't become as pertinent as it was when, you know, we were looking at different options. So we can do that. So that can be a condition. That's easy.
But thank you for answering all the questions we brought up in the workshop.
No worries. We just have to pay taxes to do that.
So I believe, did we um was there a public hearing? Did we close it?
We have not
We have not had a public hearing, correct?
It's the hearing is still open.
I just wanted to double check. So with that, I'd ask you to take a seat. Maybe not for long. If there's anybody, I'd like to open up the public hearing. Is there anybody who'd like to address this application before the board? See, thud. I'm going to close the public hearing. With that, does the board have any other questions? Comments?
The only the only other comment I would just like to make is in in one of the previous go rounds we had and we were discussing this, we discussed HVAC and we discussed the fact that HVAC would would only be window units. There would be no other HVAC on the roof or on the ground anywhere.
Without returning to this board.
So that's what I was going to say. How would we write that that anything but window ACs would require coming back to the board for approval?
Well, technically, since it's not on the site plan.
Yeah.
Right? It's just a, we're just making that, we're just pointing out, right, like that there that we've noticed that there's no HVAC on the site plan. We want to make sure that that in fact is the truth because and
I think our experience tells us to put it in as a condition along with the signage.
Yeah, just to cover
It should be on the site plan.
We should have it as a condition. Okay, so how did I so elegantly state that before? Anything or no, any?
Any HVAC units other than window units shall come back to planning board for review of units and screening.
And approval.
And also signage should be a separate condition that we should
What's in the muck, so?
It's in the muck, but let's just put it down here. As opposed to having it sawed down and then coming back for an approval.
Okay. So since I already started writing the conditions, why don't I just make the motion?
Be great.
Splendid idea.
Sorry?
I just have one, and I'm sorry to do it this way.
No, this is fine.
It passed.
What criterion um made this a type two? Was it the fourth under 4,000 square feet or of new construction or what made it a type two?
I I I believe it was the size, yes.
So the 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 new construction is just the six garages.
Correct.
The the main building is just all interior stuff?
Right. Correct, so the size of the new construction doesn't rise to the level of making
Of 4,000 square feet, okay. Very good.
And and just to point out, and I apologize, so that we already declared this a type two at our July 22nd meeting. So just for everybody remember it. So in regards to case number PB 1907 dash one, property address 2763 and 2771 Culver Road. I am recommending that we approve the revised site plan with the following conditions. The property needs to be resubbed to one property, any HVAC other than windows. I can't read my writing. And other than window units need to come back before the planning board for review and approval and any signage requires planning board approval. Any future signage I'll put down. Did I miss anything? Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? No abstains, no abstains. Thank you and look forward to seeing this project.
Thank you all so much for your time and help.
Thank you. Thank you for taking the extra time.
Thank you.
The last thing is a review of the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I just have one um small correction on the minutes. It would be um under the first case PB 1907 dash one, the motion itself was um tabled at the request of the applicant. Not with the consent of the applicant.
Yeah, there was a clarification we made at the meeting. I agree.
That's why I missed it. It wasn't a grammatical thing.
Is that the only change?
That's the only change that I see. I
And then you're making a motion to approve?
I will make a motion that we approve the minutes of July 22nd, 2019 as amended.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to abstain because I was not present for that meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to close the meeting?
I'll give you the motion to close.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 We hope you enjoyed this presentation of the Rondacoi Planning Board on ICAT Government Access.